You don't hear me? Now?
I can't hear you from here. I don't hear on my phone.
How about now? Now? Would you not hear me through here?
No.
Okay. She's not.
Did you hear? I don't think so either.
Okay. Are we ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Everyone, please rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening, all. We have a pretty packed agenda here this evening. First, council has your agenda in front of you. Any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda as printed? Here and now, the chair will move that the agenda be accepted with unanimous consent. We also have minutes coming from the August 25th meeting and September 8th meeting. Should I have a chance to go through those minutes? Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to those minutes? Here and now, the chair will also move that they be accepted with unanimous consent. Moving on, you have disbursements from October 20th and October 27th. Got a chance to review those, speak with Ms. Lane, our fiscal officer. Do we have any additions, deletions, or corrections to those disbursements? Here and now, the chair will move that they also be accepted with unanimous consent. Okay, moving on. We have a proclamation for a pro bono month, October 2020. And who's here?
Sandy Brown. Midshore Pro Bono.
There's Ms. Brown. It's in Hallwick. Come on in, Sandy. Sandy? Sandy? Come on up, have a seat.
I'm driving out.
How are you?
I'm late, I'm sorry.
That's okay. You're right on time, actually. Sandy, you want to tell us a little bit about the pro bono month? And then we'll have Madam Secretary go ahead and read the proclamation.
Oh, sure. I'm so sorry for being late. Thank you so much.
It's okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Do you like my new hummingbird mask?
Looks wonderful.
Thank you very much. So, we're just grateful to be part of the national celebration of pro bono. And also, it's perfect timing to help support the work that we're doing. And also, great timing because of the great partnership that we have with the county. So, we're thankful to you guys so that we can help more people who are suffering right now. So, we're just pleased to have you guys recognize this month and get the word out to more people that help is available.
And thank you for all the work that you all are doing, working with our CARES program, trying to make sure that individuals who need legal assistance, whether it be for rental issues or homelessness issues, can always come to you all for help. And the CARES funding is there to help supplement some of that cost.
Yes, so, thank you.
So, thank you as well for doing that. Proclamation for October as Midshore Pro Bono Month. Madam Secretary, would you please read the proclamation?
Proclamation, October is Midshore Pro Bono Month, whereas Midshore Pro Bono is a nonprofit organization founded in 2005 by a small group of dedicated and compassionate local judges and attorneys who recognized the overwhelming need for basic civil legal services for low-income people. And whereas Midshore Pro Bono was the first regional pro bono organization in Maryland dedicated to connecting private attorneys with the most disenfranchised residents in need of civil legal representation. And whereas Midshore Pro Bono's core values of integrity, service orientation, compassion, professionalism, respect, dignity, and collaboration underwrite its vision for empowering all people on the eastern shore to resolve civil legal issues by working hand-in-hand with local organizations to break down cultural, geographic, and economic barriers to the civil justice system for the area's poorest residents in eastern Maryland and its satellite offices in Chestertown and Salisbury. And whereas in 2009, the American Bar Association Standing Committee on Pro Bono and Public Service initiated the annual observance of Pro Bono Week to highlight the increasing need for pro bono services nationally and to honor the work of attorneys who donate their legal services throughout the year. And whereas, the 2020 National Celebration of Pro Bono takes place the week of October 25th through 31st, 2020, with this year's theme Rising to Meet the Challenge: Pro Bono Responds to COVID-19. And whereas, the state of Maryland has chosen to celebrate pro bono the entire month of October rather than just for one week, providing an even more opportune time to recognize Midshore Pro Bono's outstanding efforts toward making civil legal representation more accessible to those who might otherwise face great difficulty in securing representation. Now, therefore, we, the County Council of Talbot County, in keeping with the state of Maryland and jurisdictions throughout the state, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2020 as Midshore Pro Bono Month in Talbot County and encourage all citizens to join with us in recognizing and reaffirming the importance of pro bono services on a local, state, and national basis, given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County this 27th day of October in the year of our Lord 2020.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Are there a motion for the proclamation?
I'll move for the proclamation.
Moved by Mr. Leisher. Seconded by Mr. Callahan. Any further discussion? Here and now, Madam Secretary, please call your role in the proclamation.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Mr. DeVio?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Leisher?
Aye.
Yeah, I think I even have this for you. I do. So, you want to come forward and I'll present this to you, Ms. Brown.
Yeah, that's great. I'm going to post you guys all over the place. There's a little activity going on outside, so I got a little nervous. You know? But, ah, you know. Goodness, this is, this made me a little weepy. All right. Thank you guys so much for everything. And just if you have any comments at all, if you care of anything, if there's anything more we can be doing to help more people, please send along.
Absolutely.
Thank you for all the work you're doing.
I really appreciate it. Everything you guys done.
Okay. update from the eyes of the Board of Health.
And I did prepare slides tonight and make it a little bit easier to hear through the mask, okay? Do I have the button? Or do you? Okay, you got the button. Let's go then. I wanted to give you just an overview also of all the trends and what's happening. Go ahead. Oh. This? Oh, thank you. I thought you, okay. So, as of Friday, the big word was that the United States hit 82,670, which had been the highest number since all of this started. As of October 27, globally, there's been 43.6 million cases with 1.15 million deaths. In the U.S., 8.7 million cases, 225,765 deaths. In Maryland, as of today, 141,741 cases, 3,962 deaths. And in Talbot, 646 cases and nine deaths. The eastern shore has been a hotspot for the past couple of weeks, or a little over. They're actually, some of the counties going down now. The one that isn't and keeps staying high, highest in the state that we've seen is Dorchester with a 35.8 per 100,000 case rate. According to their health officer, it has not been one, but just multiple outbreaks. This is just to give you a picture of the U.S. The first peak was the smaller one, and then we peaked again in around July, came back down, and now you can see we're going back up again. And it's expected that November and December will be even higher than the second peak. So, what we're doing now in the way of planning is we're really looking at what to expect on the third peak in November, December, especially with that being holiday season and a lot of family and social gatherings. Looking at testing, how we can keep that up, contact tracing, hospital surge. In some of the Midwest states, they're already getting close to capacity. Not us, we're doing very well with that. School and classroom instruction is a concern everywhere. Then we're heading into the influenza season with that and COVID. That makes the hospitals nervous about surge. We're also looking at the influenza vaccination. Of course, we're talking about COVID and when that might be available, I'll say a little bit more later, and then about CARES funding, run lower or maybe need funding. So, we've been doing a very robust testing statewide. All the week, it was almost like 30,000 reported a day. However, today, it's 23,000, but that's lower than usual. It's been hitting a good 30,000. And that's a testing PCR. That's not supposed to be rapid antigen. So, we've asked repeatedly for the state, are you sure this is not some rapid antigen? They say they don't think so, but that's a concern because, as you probably know, the rapid antigen test, you can't diagnose a positive on that. You have to do a PCR test to call it a positive case. And the reason is, they're not reliable enough. And if you had it early on and you're not symptomatic, you're often not having enough viral load so that you'll have a negative test, but you will have the infection. So, only those confirmed by PCR are supposed to be positive cases. We looked at the turnaround time. It gets better, then it gets worse. The state decided to combine a lot of their testing and go with CION labs, CI, A I. And that's practically put an overload on them for the past three or four weeks. They've had a four-day turnaround where they used to have a two-day turnaround. So, what we're trying to get is everybody turn around like 24 to 48 hours, like the University of Maryland system has, and they do the testing at the Chesapeake College. But most of the others are two to three days. We don't use the state contract as a man who can go out and contract on their own. We're doing pretty well getting that in two to three days, definitely better than the CION, which is taking four days. So, I just put up also the name of the website where you can go in and log on for Chesapeake College and have their own portal. You naturally go on and find your results there. And then we have moved from the high school to the office club. So, the testing, we expect the demand to increase over November and December. We've seen that the test sites are a little lower. That sounds funny if we've had 30,000 tests, but remember, there's been a requirement to do a lot of testing in public living, like nursing homes and all. So, that's accounted for a lot of the tests also. We're looking at probably, possibly going in the partnerships or the region and at least having a test site on Saturday. Right now, we go Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday.
I'm sorry, Dr. Whitley. I hate to interrupt you. Parker, her mic's not red. If that's the problem, the other ones are?
No, but hers is not. Hers switched off. We pushed it off.
Okay.
So, she should, she should be getting.
I just want to make sure the community can hear this. And they can't?
They're just having some issues hearing you out.
Oh, okay. So, we're working on it. So, can you also hear? Can you hear me now?
Try, try, try that.
Is this better?
You're going to need to push it on to right here.
Is this better? Yes. All right. So, we're looking at what we can do to possibly have a Saturday clinic. Having to wait that many days, if you really need a test and get it back, makes it difficult. So, hopefully, okay. So, hopefully, we'll be able to get a Saturday clinic, and that will make it more continuous, okay? The private providers will be getting the rapid antigen testing, what they call point of care, because it can be done in the office. Keep in mind, though, that these are only recommended as screening tests and only if you're symptomatic. That's the only time they really help, and that tells you that there's a problem in, you know, credibility and sensitivity and all, because if they're symptomatic and you get a positive, you want to go ahead and start treating it right then like a positive. It is far more positive, likely to be positive than negative. But if it is negative, you don't really know. There's a lot of chance that it could be positive. So, that's what those will be used for. We're still hoping for a better molecular test that could be done quicker on-site. There's a lot of research going on. Hopefully, we'll have it in a few months. We just don't have it now. They're also doing testing on, instead of gounding up and doing all of this to get the nasal swab, about just getting a specimen of saliva and doing a test on that, which decreases your need for the personal protective equipment and a lot of effort there. So, there's a lot going on. There's even one now that they want to use in airports, if it ever pans out. It needs a lot more testing, but you just sort of blow, like a breathalyzer, and it has particles of the antigen, the virus. So, that would, that would be, we've never had a test like that, but that would definitely be great for travelers and things like that, if it was sensitive enough to really pick up the test.
So, you mean similar to a breathalyzer that they use on the side of the road? Okay.
Yeah. Now, that one I just read about, that one, they said no way they'd be close to it before the first of the year. But, you know, it seems like we've been in this forever, but it hasn't been. I mean, the research has gone rapidly in a lot of different directions and doing some good stuff. It's just not here yet. And actually, we think we can handle the testing increased demand as long as we're allowed to roll over our CARE dollars. Most people think we can, and hopefully, that will happen. Contact tracing, we've had some challenges, and I'm sure you've read about some of them. One of them is just the software that we had to sort of switch over in mid-pandemic to, and it's been a little problem, and still, we don't get reports out. We have to do them manually. But we're definitely finding that confirmed cases are being much more resistive about naming contacts, where they've been, or any particular event. This is not Hispanics who are afraid of being deported. These are actually Caucasians, very middle-class, but if they had a party or something, don't want to talk about it. We're still seeing from our contact tracing statewide that some of the biggest risks are family gatherings and reunions and private home parties, also restaurants and bars. So, when it comes to contact tracing, which we had to get additional people, we think we can still do this with rollover CARE dollars if we're allowed to roll over them from December Hospital surge here and in Maryland, although our numbers are going up, we still have plenty of capacity left. That hasn't been a problem. Remember that a lot of these are in younger people, so the hospitalization rate is not as great. What hospitals are more concerned about, as I mentioned earlier, is going into influenza when there's more hospitalizations and pneumonia from that, but also with the COVID. And although there's more beds now through the planning that we haven't used, the surge beds, the concern is really the staffing for the beds. You can have the beds, but if you don't have the people to care for the patients, then that doesn't help very much. I think we're better prepared for PPE. The state has mandated that nursing homes and hospitals keep a 60-day supply. If they do that, even if there is a peak, we think we're going to be pretty good. We also have some put back, and the state also has some put back. I could always be wrong about that if it's a really big surge all across the state, but we're feeling pretty good this time about the PPE. Schools are a big concern right now for lots of reasons. You would like to have the kids back in school with, in classroom instruction. Much of the safety, which many people don't want to recognize, is it doesn't depend just upon the school. It depends on the whole community and how much virus you have spread in the community. I will tell you that across the country and across Maryland, the virus is more in the staff and teachers than it is in the children. I think they're doing a pretty good job of watching the children and make sure they keep their mask on and stay six feet apart. And so, we've got to keep reminding the teachers to do that. But from what some of the studies that we've done on the contact tracing, they have brought it in from the school, hadn't transmitted in the school, but brought it into the school from having parties where several teachers were there. So, our objective as we look at this is how do we keep the virus from spreading within the schools? So, if we keep the six-foot distance and we keep the mask on everybody, then we've got a good chance, even if somebody comes in with the virus. That's very important. If they do the mask and the six-foot distancing, a lot of want to know why they can't totally fill up the classroom again. You can't do the six-foot distance, and you're going to only get 14 in our big classrooms if you want to keep them six feet apart. And now, if you want to start going back on the recommendations and putting them closer together and not wearing the mask, you're going to see more. If you look at actually the past couple of weeks, and I follow the 0 to 9, the 10 to 19 very closely, those are school age, they're not increasing. I think some of them had, they had a higher rate during the summer when they were out with each other. If you look at the ones 60 and older, we saw an increase there. When I look at our own breakouts since September, we've had a significant number in the 60-year-old, 60 and above, I should say, not just 60-year-old. So, in the schools, though, we're really looking for when there is transmission in the school. And there's been a lot of concern, if there's one person, why don't you close that school? Well, we're wearing the mask, and we're staying six feet apart, cohorting the class so that there's not a lot of mixing and mingling, all because we know the virus will come in. We just don't want it to spread within the school. And so far, you know, we've done pretty well. You heard about Talbot and Caroline closing. They had a lot bigger community spread than we did at the time. And of course, a lot of the misinformation gets to the media, and they want to know, well, why didn't you close schools? If you go by the guidelines, you know, you want to see that you're transmitting in the schools. You want to use a lot of guidelines, not just, I've got one positive or two positive in a school room. And as we said, Dorchester has been running 30, 35, 36. While we were running, the highest we got was 13.4, and that made me nervous. And that's per 100,000 population. We're now down to 8.5. I like that. But, you know, we had, we stayed low at four and five for a while. But if you looked at, we averaged, if we averaged three a day, we could stay under the 10. If we average four a day, it's going to be over 10. That's how little it takes in a county this small for your rate to fluctuate.
Frida? Is this working? I wanted to ask a question about that. Cases, if there's no additional, am I not working?
No, no, I think you are. Just first.
Speaking, Mr. President.
Keep speaking.
Keep speaking. If there's no additional hospitalizations and there's no additional deaths, do they wait that case number? I mean, it's cases per 100,000, but if the hospitalizations and deaths were going up, that's far more troubling than if none of that happens. So, is that taken into consideration at all with these numbers?
I didn't get all of that, but I think what I got was that the deaths are not going up. They're staying low.
And the hospitalizations?
Hospitalizations are not going up here. They are going up in Maryland.
So, do they take that into consideration?
Yes. For example, if a school had, if the school was having some cases, but we had, the number of our cases was a big nursing home breakout, that's not really in the average community, okay? So, when we look at that figure that they give us, it's when to start considering. But when they say start considering, it's figure what your community's doing, not what somebody else's. So, if you got close to that 13 to 15, which they say you really should consider at 15, should you close? But you had all of the cases, the majority, in this business or this nursing home, no, I still wouldn't close them, okay? As I said, we all want the kids to be in school. We want them to be there safely. So, we should take all of that into consideration and not just one thing, a number. And I think that makes it harder for some to understand, but makes it better for the We're starting our vaccine. We've also been asked to use a new system for ordering even flu vaccine, and we'll also have to use it for the COVID. And you have to have appointments. They send you that much vaccine, with just a little bit more. Now, the reason that's not great is that all of us are not good at making appointments. And so, we'll show up the day because it became handy that we could go. We hope they send us enough because many times, ours that show up without an appointment are far greater than the ones with appointment. But it has been stated, this is the only way we get the vaccine, so we have to play the Talking about the vaccination, and there's been a little bit more discussed in the past two or three weeks. There is actual hope of maybe by the end of this year, if not then, early January. That would say that the third-phase trials go absolutely great without any hitch or problems. There's six candidates, six companies in the U.S. that the government is helping with the vaccine. For all six of those, instead of the usual way of turning in your information after you've completed all the tests, they have an advisory board looking over all six of them at the same time, all data at the same time, deciding when they should stop or look at something, okay? Phase one and phase two is primarily to look for, are there any safety problems and what should the dose be? Then phase three is to look at, how effective is it? With the first two phases, they've already seen that there is an antibody response produced by the vaccines, and some of them are even more than if you had the infection. And let me clarify that. If you have, it appears, a really bad case, you have higher antibodies than if you just had a very mild case. So, now, the third phase is to see if they're really protective and maybe how long. You can see that if they get something by the first of January, though, they're not going to be able to say, you will keep these antibodies for a year, two years, or whatever. That still will have to be determined. Of course, with this type of virus, we've already learned, like with the flu, that you don't get the same efficacy that you get with the children. that you don't get the same efficacy that you get with the children's immunization, which like with measles, you can get a 97, 98% protection. They're hoping for the best, 50%, and will be very blessed if they get 60 to 70% because it's considered, we need that to have herd immunity for the infectious status of this virus. But some of the challenges already that we're trying to prepare for is they'll come in two doses and you can't give one of one and one of the other. You got to make sure that if they get this product, that they get the second dose of the same product. Secondly, there's at least one or two of them that have to stay at 175 degrees. That's minus Fahrenheit. Most people don't have equipment that can take it that low. So they're just saying, you use dry ice. But it's put in 90, 900 doses packages. And once you thaw that, you have to use it within 10 days. For that reason, they're looking at small counties like us. We may have to have one hub and they send that hub the virus. And then we have to coordinate all of our clinics so we can use at least 900 within that 10-day period. So I mentioned the CARES funding. We're hoping to be able to carry the CARES dollars that we currently have past December 31st till at least June 30th of 2021. If that occurs, we think we can have the money to, not in any way have a lot left over, but we think we can continue the testing as we're doing, the contact tracing as we're doing. We've got quite a bit of PPE. And we could also, we don't know if we're going to get any dollars for the vaccination in time to gear up, so we could be doing that. We hope to hear after the election. I can't imagine not letting you carry it over, except that some say they will have none left over. So they may want to take from the ones that tried to manage it well and re-divide it, okay? That's, that's our concern. But we would be okay if they'd let us roll over those dollars. Any questions?
Well, thank, I'll end right with, I'll begin right where you ended. Regarding the CARES funding, so we haven't heard from the state, from DBAM or MDH, whether or not they, thank you, whether or not those funds can in fact be carried over. We're hoping that they will, but.
We've asked them multiple times. They've given us their best guess, Jordan Butler, that he thinks they will be. He even says, I don't think we'll ever have anything definite until a little bit later. But that's all I have, is a best guess by somebody hiring the finance at the MDH.
Okay, because I know on the last call with DBAM, they were, you know, talking about making sure that all of the i's were dotted and t's were crossed with the CARES funding to make sure that there was no inappropriate spending being done. And it sounded like they were, had other plans if monies were returned back.
I would not doubt that. That's, that's why we're concerned. You know, they talked one time about, make sure you've spent all the money. And I'm saying, well, are you going to come back then and tell me I can't continue contact tracing for two or three months because I don't have any money? So I'm going to take the risk that they're going to let us roll it over and I'll have enough to do us until maybe there's some additional funding for vaccine come down the road.
Director Staff, have you heard anything on your antifema as far as, or anything from the?
So, Mr. Council President, we, we have submitted application to FEMA and it's in process right now. I don't have any definitive response at this point, but we are going through the application process. I hope to know something within the next 30 days as to whether our full request will be answered or not, or whether we have to seek other ways to address things we submitted for, mostly PPE.
Mostly PPE. Any, any other questions, the council?
Yeah.
Yes.
Dr. Wadley, a question about the, the intersectionality of influenza and, and COVID-19. As you continue to do these testing sites, are we, as influenza comes into Maryland, are you going to have to be administering two tests? For, one for influenza and one for COVID for anybody who's symptomatic?
In the doctor's office, they have, they usually, because it's a point-of-care test, they usually have, so they can do the rapid tests there. And already, we're getting into the season where they're doing, finding that it's positive flu. Makes them feel better, but they still do a COVID test usually.
So it already is here?
You could have both. Now, the chances go down, okay? So the rapid test, we know we've got one machine and a few tests. Where we would use those probably from a health department standpoint is like in the school for any positives, excuse me, any, any symptomatics. We would do it. We would then get the PCR test. But we would treat that positive then like a positive because it's, it goes, it's a higher likelihood if they're symptomatic and had that positive test. So we may be doing some of those rapid tests in schools if we can get the supplies and all. But we are not doing any of the flu tests. That's usually, that's handled very well in the healthcare system.
Thank you.
You have a question?
So this was one of the first slides, and I want to go back over real quick just because of the communication problem in the beginning. So with Thanksgiving and Christmas coming up, we had the conversation this morning on the phone, and I'll break this bad news to the public, that if somebody goes away for Thanksgiving, they come back, they get the test, they still need to stay home while they're waiting for those results from work. So make sure that you, you take that into consideration when you're looking at your time off, that you have enough time to stay home for that. And could you go over, we have two testing sites. We have the Elks and Chesapeake College on two different days. Could you just go over that?
Monday and Wednesday are Chesapeake. Tuesday and Thursday are the Elks. And then we hope to get before November, or sometimes within November, a Saturday site maybe. It's the staffing that's the problem. So if I could pull off an agreement like we had before with the other counties and, and have something centrally here for anybody in the region. Once you staff it, it's, you like to have it really full and as much as you can possibly do instead of just, you know, half of what you could do.
And how things going at emergency services, are you managing there?
Yes, Mr. Council President, we are on day 230 of the activation in support of the health department and the community in general. I just want to reassure the community that the Emergency Operations Center conducts our weekly coordination calls where Dr. Wadley briefs everybody and the group leads in, in certain areas like medical surge capacity, feeding, the grants, we go over that. And then every other Tuesday, we still hold a call with the business community. So although things have, the number of cases have reduced, we're maintaining the posture of coordination so it exists in case it ramps up. So we, we continue to do our due diligence in support of the community. Thank you.
And Dr. Wadley, I know you're on both those Tuesday calls and our Wednesday calls.
Yes. And also, we're having a call with all schools.
Oh, you do?
At least once a week. There's school nurses and somebody in their staff who's over the health part. That's public and private schools. We had to do that because there were just so many questions. So other than day-to-day, also answering questions, we have that call, and they're going to start a state call with superintendents and health officers. And I think the first one is this Friday. But the schools, you know, they, they're going to consume quite a bit of health department time. And we think it's important. We don't mind doing it. But there's a lot of different, for childcare and schools, a lot of questions and all come up about what, what should we do?
Well, let me just say to you in closing, thank you so much. I know over the last 230 days, you've been pulled in into more directions than you could ever imagine to be pulled into. And I know that sometimes it, it felt like, you know, the, the whole weight of this county and of the state was on your shoulders. I just want to say to you, thank you so much for all that you've done. Thank you for your professionalism. Thank you for your patience with us as we work through these difficult times. And we, we couldn't have asked for a better health officer to work with to get us, to get us through these difficult times. So I just want to say to you publicly that you poured your all into making sure that you kept Talbot County safe. Sometimes your recommendations were listened to, sometimes they weren't. But I think your recommendation was always based on the science that you had in front of you. So I just want to say thank you very much, Dr. Wadley.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. And staying on a health note, we have a two, presentation of the 2021, the FPA 21 Senior Care Plan. Kate Stenton is here with us. Kate is our community health officer, nurse supervisor, excuse me, community health. My glasses are fogging up, Kate, I apologize. She's our community health nurse supervisor here in Talbot County Health Department. Kate, good to see you, I apologize.
Good to see you and thank you for your time this evening. I really appreciate it. I'm here on behalf of Talbot County Health Department to present the fiscal year 21 Senior Care Program Plan, which is really, it's a grant that comes down through the Maryland Department of Aging through an Aging Program Directive. It's a partnership that we've participated in through our area agency on aging, which is Upper Shore Aging. The reason for us coming every year like we do is to inform the council and the public about the plan, what the plans are, and also to respectfully ask for their approval for the plan. It's been presented, of course, within the Health Department to Dr. Wadley, to Linda Webb at Social Services, and to Gary Gunther. And it's really these, this grant is designed to be different in each jurisdiction and each jurisdiction comes up with a plan on how they want to administer the funds. So we, the funds come through Department of Aging to Upper Shore to us. And after we get the approval of all entities, then we can send that approval up and they'll disperse the grant funds. So that's, that's the, one of the reasons for our visit here. I think I sent a lot of information about the program and the grant, which was, was a lot. So I just want to touch on the key components. Again, it's, it's a great partnership. And we've been, just a little history, we've administered the program this way since 1982. We were a pilot program when Department of Aging first decided to come out with this, this type of funding and this type of program. And at that point in time, the grant award was 243,000, which was, was a pretty good sum of money for a county our size. And we administered it successfully year after year, served a lot of seniors in the community. And in 2014, the funds were reallocated based off of population and percentages of people, especially seniors at poverty level. And overnight in one year in 14, our grant dollars were cut to $100,000 from 243. So we were worried about how we were going to serve all these people we had enrolled with, with certain services. At that point in time, we came up with some ideas. We came to the, the council and, and since 2014, I know the county council has approved some additional allocation of funds from the Health Department for this program in the amount of $50,000, and we appreciate that every year. It helps to supplement the loss we took back then. Again, this, it's a statewide program. And, and, and the purpose of the program, the main purpose through this Aging Directive is to provide really coordinated, community-based, in-home services for our senior population that are, that are at risk for nursing home placement. So there are income guidelines and asset guidelines that are pretty generous because it's meant to serve the people that don't, can't get any home-based services or any assistance through any formal services. They're above those poverty-level guidelines that might make them eligible for Medicaid and some other programs, but, but they're still greatly in need. So that's our target population in Talbot. It tends to, tends to be the lower-income people, and I have some statistics on that. And some of the funds can, are, or the majority of the funds in our case, over 60% of the funds, nearly 70, can be used directly for client services. So we can help them purchase services, purchase supplies, purchase things like they need chore service, personal assistance, med equipment, medical equipment supplies, medicine co-pays, those types of things. So we can actually use funds for that, which is, is a great program to have. The eligibility criteria, it is 65 and older, even though Older American Act usually funds 60 and older. This particular program's for 65 and older. And again, a typical, the income guideline is, is very generous. But with the limitations of the grant funds, there's so many, so many people we can serve with this. So we tend to focus on the lower-income, highest-need folks. And another requirement is there, the people we serve have some functional disability, which means they're, they're not able to go out and do the things, you know, to, to maybe get a second job or go out or do things. Most of our folks are pretty much homebound and have medical or social needs. So the importance of this to us is if we're keeping people out of nursing homes, there's a lot of reasons for that. It's quality of life. It's keeping people at home longer and being active participants in the community. And, you know, most people do not choose to, you know, want to go to a nursing home any earlier than they have to. We obviously value our seniors and value their experience, and they're really a backbone of our community, and we'd like to, to keep them in the community as long as possible. The other thing is cost. We, we fill in the gaps with this money, and that's why the money is often called gap-filling money. So if we can fill in the gaps and keep somebody out of a nursing home, let's say for a month, Medicaid, the Medicaid rate for a nursing home right now is $206 a day. So you're talking roughly, you know, $6,600 a month for Medicaid to pay for a month of nursing home. For our maximum amount is for, is about $500 a month we would support somebody on in the community. So that's an immediate cost savings. So if we can delay or prevent nursing home placement, that's a huge cost savings to the system as well, as well as the quality of life. And again, the program directs us that we can only provide services through this grant when they're not available by any other means. So one of the important services that we provide, and I think we do such a good job with, is the case management care coordination. We have dedicated staff that are experienced. We couldn't pull this off without the staff that we have. They're experienced. We have great partnerships in the community. They're connected. They know where to go to get things done. And it's really the case management that a lot of times supports people and not necessarily the incontinence supplies, the emergency response system, the other things that we provide. It's hands-on, home-based. We go to the senior in the community. We don't expect them to come to us. This really isn't a program that we can do well totally teleworking. We have to be out and about and in the homes. It's a voluntary program. And, and we get referrals from a multitude of sources and, and quite often, it's from seniors in the community referring other seniors. Over half of our referrals are, are, you know, based on personal referrals from people in the community. They're getting services and tell somebody else about it. One thing that's unique in Talbot, every county designs their program differently. We are one of two to three health departments where the health department is the primary entity that administers the program. And what we've done, which I, I can't take credit for because it happened back in the 80s, but we've, we've merged it with a nursing evaluation program. They call it the AERS Nurses. Their job under MDH is to go out and do home evaluations on seniors and make recommendations about, you know, services, what's available, and then they leave. The, the senior care dollars provides for the case management. So when we merge those programs, we already have nurses going out, doing the evaluations. Well, now they can stay. They don't have to hand the client off to another entity and they can do the case management. So our clients don't wait for services. We, we, if people are interested in the program and they're eligible, we can sometimes begin services on the day that we visit. So that, it saves us money and it's, it's just smoother for the client. And it's worked well for us, and I think it's why we've been able to serve so many people so effectively. We've, we use community health workers from the Health Department, and we've hired ones that are also certified nurses assistants so they can, they can do direct care under nursing supervision with the seniors, but they can also help with case management tasks. supervision with the seniors, but they can also help with case management tasks. We have lists of people that want to apply for homeowners' tax credits, MEET, renters' tax credits. We can help them do that through the community health workers and our staff. So we really look at medical needs and social needs, and I think we're really a good model for a true health hub because of that. The nurses can coordinate with physicians, making sure that appointments are made. During COVID, we've done a lot of assistance with, you know, teleappointments, helping people connect with their physicians. So I really think we have a great mesh of dealing with medical and social needs. We don't, in this county, we've never had a waitlist for enrollment in services. Many counties have large waitlists because of the way they're designed, in my opinion. Again, the participation is voluntary. One thing to mention, no program or service, no program that I know of can meet everybody's need, even this is just gap-filling. We don't operate alone. We have fantastic partners in Talbot County. Our formal partners, like Department of Aging and Social Services, are definitely partners that share cases and discuss how to make things happen. And I just wanted to mention a few of the other local partners that are of huge help to our clients and assist. St. Vincent de Paul, Midshore Probono that was here earlier, Union Dorcas, Society of Talbot, St. Mark's United Methodist Church, Maryland Community for Life. Talbot is another Department of Aging program that we work with. Partners in Care is merging with them. Bay Hundred Community Volunteers is huge in helping our people get access. And they work with us, they know us, they know the staff, they know if we refer to them, that we've kind of put some process in place. We know about the client, we know about the situation, and we work well with them. When we do referrals, the good thing about this program, we can follow people long-term for case management. We just don't say, you know, "Contact this person and you can get this done." We stay with them and make sure the contact's made. How can we facilitate it? What can we do to help? We make sure the connections are made so they can get the services. And just briefly, I think an important thing to note, in 2019, there was about eight, eight and a half million dollars in grant money from Department of Aging was allocated for this program statewide, and there were 4,120 participants. We only received 1.3% of this budget in Talbot, but we served over 5% of the people served. So I think that has to do not only with the program design, the staff, but also the county contribution and our partner contribution. And that's how we maximize what we have. The county, the Department of Aging grant this year is $115,000, so it did go up a little bit. We, last year, we served 213 individuals in the program, which was a record for us, and we're finding we're going up about 3% to 5% as far as people calling and asking for assistance. So a quick breakdown, about 62% of our funds last year went to those gap-filling funds to purchase services and supplies. About 30% went to case management staff, and 8% were spent on administrative costs. Our population, another, I think, an important thing to mention is, of the people we serve, almost two-thirds are living on a fixed income of less than $1,500 a month. So that's, you can kind of get a picture of who we serve. And 42% are living on a fixed income of 1,100 or less a month. We're finding a lot of, our seniors are eligible for formal programs they weren't aware of, like some of the low-income Medicare, the QMB and the Slim B Medicare plans that pay for the cost of their Medicare Part B. If they don't, if they're not enrolled, once we enroll them, that saves them $135 a month. So those are the type of things we look for to maximize what they're eligible for and just help support them in the community. I think I mentioned the services, and again, I just can't, I got to credit the staff. We've got nurses, community health outreach workers, a social worker, and a unit secretary, and they're extremely dedicated. We just did our first formal survey to our clients. We sent out 168 surveys, just asking them to rate five different areas of their satisfaction with the program. We got a 61% return rate, which was pretty good, and 98% said they were satisfied or very satisfied overall. So that was, that was a good reflection on, I think, the work the staff is doing. During COVID, just to kind of toot their horn again, is that we, at the beginning, we had to limit home visits due to lack of PPE. We were limited, and the PPE needed to go to more urgent areas, but we still went out. We made phone calls to our clients every day. Our phones were open for them to call. We did grocery shopping. We tracked during the time of March through May alone, the staff made 402 home visits just to check on people, deliver supplies, and that sort of thing. And as, in June, once the PPE was more available, we geared up and we were back in the households when clients wanted us to. We found a very interesting mix of, you know, some people wanted us to come, were lonely, they wanted us in there. Some had family members that were able to stay with them and provide services, and they really didn't need us as much. We had family members that had to be quarantined and said, "Can you go check on my parents or grandparents more often?" So we kind of got a mix of requests. So we did a lot of meal and grocery shopping, assisting the county groups that were running food banks and food delivery. We assisted them. And I think staff did really a heroic job of going out there and supporting vulnerable folks in the community. Moving forward, I think our worries are that our, the numbers served are going up. Our support money's pretty much staying the same. We worry about that we're not filling in the gaps enough in certain situations to help support people and keep them out of nursing homes and keep them safe. Again, we, due to the limitations of our financial resources, we spend most of our time and funds on the highest-risk cases, and with the lowest-income seniors who have high medical needs. And just another important note, that we're not really just supporting the seniors, we're supporting their caregivers. We want, we don't want people to have to leave their jobs or limit their jobs or stay home if they don't have to, if we can find some support for their vulnerable senior family members. We know that, you know, the numbers of seniors are growing. The statistics we have that nearly 30%, well, right now, 30% of the population in Talbot is roughly 65 and older, and the statistics show that about 1 in 5 by the year 2030 will be 65 and older. And we want people to stay healthy. We do a lot of preventative work, chronic disease management, but we also have a need today to support some of the folks that are especially vulnerable. So that's pretty much what we do with the program. Again, you know, the staff really make it happen. The additional support we get from the county definitely makes us be able to serve the number of people that we serve. So I want to thank you for that and just, you know, respectfully request that you review and approve the plan so we can get our grant dispersment and move on.
Well, Kate, actually, thank you very much for the presentation, but the thanks actually goes back to you and to your staff. You're making much to do with little that you have. And when you look at that, you're only receiving less than 1.5% of the total state allocation for this program, but you're serving 5% of those participants. That kind of goes against the narrative that Talbot County is this big, wealthy place, and we have a bunch of money, and nobody's doing poorly, and nobody's in need, and everybody's just skipping around and dancing around and having fun. That's not the true narrative. We do have a senior population who are greatly at need, and I think that what you and your other workers are doing is meeting them at the level of that need, in the home.
Absolutely.
So they won't have to travel and risk falls and anything of that nature. So the thanks goes to you and to your staff for just doing a marvelous job. Any additional comments before I ask for a vote on the senior plan?
As the representative from the Commission on Aging, I would like to just say that I greatly appreciate you showing up tonight and going through this report. This is where the transportation workshop came out of, that discussion with the Commission on Aging, just hearing about seniors needing rides to doctors and needing more cab services in town. Yes, we do have an aging population that, it's very important for them to stay in their homes, and I greatly appreciate everything that you're doing to make sure that they're comfortable and safe in their homes, yet still have access to all of the other great benefits that we have, the senior centers, the YMCA, the other activities that we have for seniors in the community. So thank you very much.
Mr. Pack, just quickly.
Yes.
Two quick points. Number one, and I've said it before, Kate Stenson is one of the Health Department rock stars. It is absolutely amazing what she does. Number two, with your support, I'd like to work with Dr. Wadley to see if we should add this issue to the meeting with the local delegation, the issue being the state's share of funding. We certainly know the history of how it's basically dried up and gone down by 100, by 50%.
Yeah.
But there may be an argument based on our senior population of starting to look at that number and moving it up.
Excellent point added to the agenda. I would agree with that as well.
Thank you.
There's no further comments. Again, and Kate, you are a rock star. Thank you very much for all that you do. We certainly appreciate it. The chair will entertain a motion for approval of the FR 21 Senior Care Plan by Mr. Callahan.
Second.
By Mr. DeVio. Any further comment? If not, Madam Secretary, please go to the roll.
Mr. Pack.
Aye.
Mr. DeVio.
Aye.
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Mr. Leisher.
Aye.
Thank you, Kate, very much.
Thank you all so much for your time. Appreciate it.
Susan. Oh, I do. Okay, council, we now have a numbered resolution for introduction. And Madam Secretary, when you're prepared, I ask you to read the resolution.
A resolution authorizing the transfer of a portion of Glenwood Avenue in as-is condition to the Town of Easton by quick, clean deed for no monetary consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Cooper Smith, did you want to speak to this before introduction, or?
I'm happy to.
Okay. And you want to give Mr. Cooper Smith that mic? There you go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pack.
Sure.
This resolution is the result of a request from the Town of Easton for the county to convey a portion of Glenwood Avenue. The area in question is located between the bypass and the Tred Avenue River, and this section of road is in the vicinity where the footbridge is that crosses, the new footbridge that crosses over the Tred Avenue River to reach Easton Village. And so the Town of Easton has requested that the county introduce legislation to authorize the conveyance of the roadway to the town. It would be no monetary consideration, as-is condition, meaning that the county would not be improving the road before giving it to the town. The town would accept it as-is. Attached to the resolution, there is an exhibit that shows in detail the area in question, a survey that was done by a licensed surveyor of the roadway, and then there's a legal description.
And where the, thank you, Mr. Cooper Smith. And where the road currently sits, it's currently already in the town, just that that road is still county property. So it makes sense to go ahead and convey it over to them. Any additional question on Mr. Cooper Smith on the resolution? I don't, we don't have anyone from the town here, I don't think, so, okay.
Mr. President, I'm sorry for the interruption. Ms. Moran correctly is pointing out, we're trying to be prepared when you introduce it, which I think you will, as to a public hearing date.
Yes.
The month of November has your second meeting in the week of Thanksgiving. Normally, you would move that up a week. I'm not, I was not prepared to do this till the end of the meeting, but it impacts the scheduling of things right now. So I think I'm going to, I'm asking the council to quickly just consider, instead of meeting on November 24th, which is the Tuesday of Thanksgiving week, could we, would the council be willing to entertain the 17th, Tuesday, the 17th, as a special legislative day?
Okay, I know we don't like to pull our calendars out.
And I apologize.
I understand, Mr. Hallis, but we certainly understand the...
Mr. Pack, I would support the change of date.
Thank you very much, Mr. Leisher. Appreciate it. Would you also, Mr. Callahan? Would you, Mr. DeVio? I know you like to pull your calendar out. Would you look at it, please? The 17th? We have back-to-back meetings that month.
Is that okay?
Could you do it? Okay, we're all in agreement. So we're going to have, Madam Secretary, the 17th as the second legislative day for the month of November and not do a meeting on the 24th of November.
So, Mr. President, at the end of the meeting, I should take an actual...
I think you should, yes. Thank you. So just want to get it straight now. So let me go back. Nobody here from the town on this, correct? Okay. So, Madam Secretary, would you call the roll for introduction so that those who are maybe tuning in can hear it?
Mr. Pack.
Aye.
Mr. DeVio.
Introduction. Yeah, instead of showing your hands so people can hear you.
Yes. Aye.
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Mr. Leisher.
Aye.
Okay. And the number, Madam Secretary, of the resolution?
This will be known as Resolution Number 297.
297? You're going to try to put it on that new date once we get that cleared out?
Yes, and the public hearing will be on Tuesday, December 8th.
Tuesday. You want to, I think we want to move it up now? Hold on. Okay, December 8th? We're going with that date? Okay. Council, the republic hearing will be on December the 8th, so we'll let the town know in case anyone from the town wants to be here for that. Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Cooper Smith, I have one question. So it says in the resolution, it's a portion of Glenwood, okay? There's two other streets that go off from that, so is that, are we sort of giving that to the town too?
So those streets that come off of this section of Glenwood, the county does not own and maintain those. I believe those are owned and maintained by the town, but they may be private cul-de-sacs or driveways. But it's a good question, and the section of roadway that we're talking about conveying is just the main section of Glenwood Avenue.
Yeah, I got you.
Yeah, I think one goes to Easton facility property, but...
So Mr. Edwards is confirming that neither of those roads are county-maintained.
Okay, so we, December 8th for that public hearing. We do have several matters for a public hearing tonight on those past 6:30 as always. These are all interrelated. Madam Secretary, what I'm considering you do is if you read the title to each resolution, and then persons can come up and be heard on either of the three resolutions. I will take the, the fourth one is a bill, so, yeah. So that's still three, three resolutions, please.
Resolution Number 293, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan to reclassify and remap residential real property located on Ferry Bridge Road, Easton, Maryland 21601, described as Tax Map 24, Parcel 69, 70, and 191, from unprogrammed to S1 immediate priority status. Resolution Number 294, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan to approve a capital project for the improvements associated with Talbot County Resolution 235. Resolution Number 295, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan. Resolution 204, a resolution to add a capital project to upgrade the Talbot County Biosolids Facility at 9786 Klondike Road, Tax Map 18, Parcel 57, to add receiving and treatment capability for brown grease equipped with odor control, proposed for FY 2014 with funding in the amount of $6,000,000. in the amount of $6 million through Rural Utility Service Program, USDA Rural Development.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Before I turn this over to the public for their comment, does any member of staff wish to be heard on either?
Yes, Mr. President, Pack, what we have right now is that for Resolution 293, as well as 294 and 295, we need to present these to the Planning Commission on, as well as the Public Advisory Board on November 4th.
Okay.
So, I request, if we can, to keep the, I guess, the public meeting or hearing open until the y'all's next meeting.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything for, any other members of staff?
Just, just a question. The first of these, Resolution 293, the one that concerns Ferry Bridge Road, I understand, these are fairly small lots in a, I think, the RC zone, so programming these as S1 is not gonna facilitate any new dwelling units in that. I mean, it's already as subdivided as it ever will be able to be. We won't be adding more units. This will simply be changing units that are already on septic and, and put them onto the.
That's correct.
Onto the sewer pipe that flows for Unionville.
Correct. And they, basically, we have three, let's say, existing improved structures that ultimately that would be three EDUs or three sewer allocations.
But that's a good point, Mr. Leisher. So, these are, these are not new lots.
Yeah, there would be no new lots, no new lots.
Okay. If no one else from staff, I'll start on my left end. If anyone wishes to be heard on Resolution 293, 294, 295, come up, give us your, your name and which resolution you want to speak on. And anyone on the move to the right side of the room, anyone on the right side of the room, which should be heard on any of the resolutions, please come up and give your name and be heard. Showalter, good to see you.
Thank you, President Pack. Members of the Council, for the record, I'm Ryan Showalter, 100 Northwest Street, Easton, Maryland. And I'm appearing on behalf of the applicants and property owners that are the subject of Resolution Number 293. As the brief dialogue by Mr. Clark and Mr. Leisher indicated, these three properties that are the subject of this amendment request are already improved by existing dwellings. One of them is located on the point at the end of Ferry Bridge Road. It has a septic system that is seven or eight years old. It replaced essentially a dry well. The Health Department approved its replacement as a repair, but because that property is almost entirely encumbered by the 100-foot buffer, the replacement septic system is located in the buffer, and the property owner would like to go from a five-bedroom house to four, consolidate and reduce the number of bedrooms into a small addition to connect a detached garage. We've been working for several years, and the Health Department will not permit modifications to the house even to eliminate a bedroom. The second house has a septic system that was constructed, we believe, sometime in the 70s. It's a constrained lot. It has buffer impacts. And the third lot, the Leg property, has a septic tank that is pumped on a regular basis, and also, it's a constrained parcel. So, having the ability to connect those three lots to the county system will take that wastewater out of the buffer and, and out of, you know, immediate proximity of the Miles River and allow it to be treated properly. It won't facilitate any new houses or additional development, but it would permit, you know, investment in the existing residences that are there. We're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much for your comments. Appreciate it, Ryan.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to be heard on any of the resolutions? Okay. Counsel, as you heard from Mr. Clark, these matters are on the agenda for the Public Advisory Board for our November the 4th meeting, as well as Planning Commission also a meeting November the 4th. So, I were asked that we can either close the public hearing or keep it open until after. What's the day stayed?
We have one person connected to us asking.
Oh, I'm sorry, we do have, I do apologize. You have a caller for the public hearing?
We do have one caller on the line. Caller, if you're interested in speaking, please press asterisk three on your phone.
We could either leave this public hearing open through next, next Friday. Again, we won't hear back from the either commission until our second, second Tuesday in November, or we can go ahead and close the public meeting, hearing now. I don't think you're gonna garnish a lot of comment if you just go ahead and close it now, but I'll leave it open for discussion.
I'll just say we close it.
Okay, very well. Public hearing on both, on all three resolutions are closed as of now. Counsel, we'll wait to hear back from the Commissions and, Madam Secretary, I guess we can pick this back up at our November 10th meeting then. Okay. Yeah, commissions will be heard by then.
Yes, they'll be eligible for vote on November 10th.
Okay, so we'll pick this back up at our November 10th meeting, and we'll get the report back from those commissions at those times as well. Okay? Thank you, Mr. Clark. Thank you, Ryan. Next matter we have up for a public hearing is a bill. This is Bill 1467. Madam Secretary, would you please read the bill?
Bill Number 1464, a bill to amend Chapter 172 of the Talbot County Code Taxation to authorize the creation of special taxing districts in Talbot County for the purpose of installing, maintaining, and operating street lighting along county roads, and when such improvements are approved by the Maryland Department of Transportation, State Highway Administration, along state highways within Talbot County.
Thank you very much, Madam Secretary. I'll start again on my left side of the room. Anyone on the left side of the room which should be heard on Bill 1464, come up, give your name and be heard. Anyone on the right side of the room which to be heard on Bill 1464, please come up, give your name and be heard. Mr. Dorm, I'll turn to you. Do we have any callers who wish to be heard on Bill 1464? This matter can be brought, brought before the Council at this time for third reader, for Council to take action on it this evening. The Chair will entertain if there's a motion to do so at this time. Move by Mr. Callahan?
Second.
Second by Mr. Leisher. Any further discussion on moving the matter before Council for third reader?
Just that this is, this is, I think, an important, an important bill to resolve an unresolved funding issue for street lighting down in Tillman. This is to create a, you know, this, this had been paid for, for a number of years by the Tillman Fire Company. They cried uncle on this, and, and the county intervened as an emergency measure, but we need to find a long-term means of maintaining those, those street lights. And, and this is the solution that we're looking at. So, I, I'm appreciative that, that we're able to move this forward now.
Thank you for it, Mr. Le. And I, and let me just add to that, you know, and it wasn't like this Council has been not trying to resolve this matter through other means. We went to SHA and asked State Highway if they would take the lights. They pretty much declined. We went to Delmarva, is it Delmarva? Delmarva and, and asked them if they would assume responsibility to the lights, which they declined. They are doing some improvements on the lights, putting in the LED, which will hopefully bring down the actual monthly cost or wattage of those, of those lights. But, so we have not just been sitting around trying to find a way to push another taxing district onto the citizens. We have been actively trying to figure out a way to get these lights conveyed over to another party. These were not lights that the county put in place, to your point, Mr. Leisher. These were actually put in place by private entities. The citizens down there were adding up once, I guess, once a month, once a year, to pay for the lights. People move, people come, people go, the bill doesn't get paid, and we stepped in over the last two fiscal years to, to pay the bill. But we, we need to find a long-term solution to keep those lights on and maybe to provide additional lighting down in that, in that part of the county at a, at a future date. So, I'm happy to support this bill. I know we've still got some additional work to do down in that area to garner support for it, and I hope that the citizens will realize the importance of keeping those lights on in Tillman. So, with that being said, we had, I didn't write my notes, we made the motion. Was that you? And a second one, Mr. Leisher? No further discussion. This is the move to second reader. Because there's no further, the third reader, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, upon a third reader. This is the move the matter to third reader. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Pack.
Aye.
Mr. DeVio.
Aye.
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Mr. Leisher.
Aye.
Bill 1464 is now before Council for third reader. Madam Secretary, would you please read the bill?
Bill Number 1464.
I ask that so much be considered a reading.
Any objection to Ms. Price's motion? Okay. Bill 1464 is now before Council for final vote. Is there any further discussion on Bill 1464? Hearing now, Madam Secretary. Again, I think we've already spoke quite extensively to the meaning for this, this particular bill. There's no further discussion. I ask Madam Secretary to call, call the matter for vote.
Mr. Pack.
Aye.
Mr. DeVio.
Aye.
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Mr. Leisher.
Aye.
Thank you. Bill 1646 passes. Mr. House, I'm looking at you. The, the next step was that is, we're gonna have to go down and garnish a community meeting on this.
Right, your staff's gonna develop options of the district boundaries for the Council again.
Okay, thank you. Next matter for Council is discussion on the request from the NWCP, Talbot County Branch, for a work session with county council members and other community leaders. Madam Secretary, there was a, a letter the Council had received. If you wouldn't mind, if you have that in front of you.
You get it in its entirety?
Yes, I don't have it.
Okay. The letter is from Mr. Richard Potter. Good evening, Council President, Mr. Pack, and fellow council members. I, along with other community leaders of Talbot County, are requesting a meeting with you to discuss next steps, as well as how to appropriately move forward that embraces the spirit of inclusion and equity as it relates to the matter of the Confederate Monument known as the Talbot Boys that sits on the Circuit Courthouse lawn. As a result of the decision to retain the Confederate Monument on the courthouse lawn, there has been much civil unrest that has prompted community members to protest that will more, more than likely continue until a removal is achieved. It is very unfortunate that this matter and issue has attracted national attention through The New Yorker and other media outlets that have placed Talbot County in a very disparaging light, which has caused me great alarm and concern. The longer it takes for us to act in an inclusive and equitable manner puts us in direct threat, put us in direct threat of potentially allowing outside people coming into our county who could set us back negatively in working together to accomplish our desire of inclusion and equity for all constituents of Talbot County. Please note that I do not believe that all people who live outside of Talbot County would potentially cause a negative setback, but more so we, as Talbot County citizens, could potentially lose control of this matter. It is my desire, along with other community leaders, that we take a proactive approach to this issue and matter. Therefore, we are requesting a meeting with the full Council on October 20th, 2020, to have authentic, transparent dialogue on how we can work together as one community to move forward in an effort in achieving a more inclusive, equitable, and welcoming county that we all desire to see. I look forward to hearing from you soon as it relates to our request. Sincerely, Richard M. Potter, President.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. And I know subsequent to that, we did get a list of those, I guess, persons mentioned or not mentioned in the letter, but referred to in the letter, and that was Mr. Richard Potter, Mr. Richard Potter, President of the Talbot County Chapter, NWACP, Mr. Walter Black, First Vice President of the Talbot County Chapter, NWACP, Ms. Megan Cook, President of the Town of Easton Council, Mr. Jim Richardson from the United Unitarian Universalist Church Social Action Chair, and Ms. Hannah Paraka from the program of the race thing, or the five citizens that were alluded to in the letter. Chair, we're opening up for any comment before we ask for motion on the, on the request? No comment? Okay. Well, I would ask for now just a, a vote on the request to move forward, to hold a meeting at some, at some date with the members that are listed, the citizens that are listed here, to discuss community feelings around not just Talbot Boy staff, but again, the other issues facing not just Talbot County, I think, the nation as a whole. I don't think we've met with the NWACP, to my knowledge, as a group since 2015, yeah, since 2015. So, it's been five years since they've requested a president before this council. So, I don't think it's something that's, in my opinion, outrageous to every five years sit down with the group and talk with them. So, that's my opinion on it. Any further comment? If not, we'll move to a vote on the, on the request. Again, there's no, the, the date mentioned in the letter, of course, has come and gone, so we'll probably have to sit down and figure out another date if this, if it's approved and wish to meet with them.
So, this is Frank DeVio. I, I will not be making a motion on this. I appreciate Mr. Potter reaching out to us. I think that when the Council's prepared to set up a work session, I would like to pick the individuals that we'd like to work with and schedule it at that time, if and when we decide to do that.
I, I think I would agree too. I think all of us are willing to, you know, have a meeting in, in the, in the near future, but at this time, I'd, I'd rather not take a vote yes or no on meeting, because we're always open to meetings. So, it's just a matter of timing and waiting to the appropriate time to meet.
Okay. Any other comment on the request to meet with these citizens?
Well, clearly, the, the date has, has passed. Should we give some indication about, about our intended timing on this?
Again, I think the calendar, we'd rather, at some point in time, sit down, look at the calendar and see what's open, and of course, do the COVID. We're gonna have to find a location that's gonna be suitable, that we can all spread out and meet with, so either at the YO prom or.
So, we can all admit that this is, this is not usual. It's not normal that somebody calls up and wants to schedule a work session and chooses the individuals for the work session. That's probably the reason there's some problems with this and confusion. I would, and I am, working to try to put together a board, and I'm working with individuals, some of whom have told me that they don't want to work with some of the individuals who are on this list, and they are people of color. So, I understand and respect their wishes, and I'm continuing to work on this. But at this time, I am not willing to schedule a meeting with Mr. Potter.
Okay. Well, as far as it being unusual, it's, again, in 2015, when the request was made, we didn't pick the persons who come to meet before us. The Council did not pick those persons. Those members were brought in to meet with Council, and we heard from them. So, we didn't cherry pick who we would, we would meet with. They, they were.
Because that was the NWACP, right? They came in?
That was, the request.
And this is not just the NWACP.
No, there are, there are two members, but there are other members as well.
Yes.
Yeah. So, to your point, it wasn't a council.
Yes, Mr. Pack, to my point.
It wasn't a council pick group.
Correct. It was the NWACP. This is not the NWACP, correct?
The letter is.
This is business, this is, this is somebody, right? Who's got a business? This is somebody from a church, and this is some, two members of the NWACP. Again, why, go ahead, let's move forward with the meeting, please.
I would just clarify, to your point, we did not select the, the members we met with the last.
Because they were all NWACP members, correct? And that was the NWACP requesting to meet with you.
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct. They were all members of the NWACP. To, to my knowledge, now, again, that was 2015, the NWC made the request, but can I say, sit here and say definitively that every person sat in that cheer, those cheers were from the NWACP? I cannot. I cannot. They made the request, but whether or not all of those members were from the NWACP, I cannot stand here and say that. No.
I watched that meeting recently, and as far as I recall, they were. And I know that I have continued to speak with many community members, including leaders including leaders from the faith community. So I would agree at this moment with Mr. DeVilleo and Mr. Callahan that I'm not willing to move forward with this particular meeting, with this particular group.
Okay. Anything further from you, Mr. Lesh?
I'm just not clear on exactly what the next step is here.
Well, the first step would be to agree to a meeting with the citizens, which it appears that members do not want to meet with these citizens. And then the next step after that would be to figure out what date and what location we would meet with them.
To clarify, the, so I was saying that, no, the first step would be if we wanted to accept the letter in the meeting with these individuals. And I've said no. That would be the first step.
I was addressing, right, to Mr. Lesh, to his point. The first step would be to agree to a meeting. Yes, that's the first step.
So if we aren't agreeing, if you have a majority, move forward.
I was answering Mr. Lesh's question, Mr. DeVilleo. He was asking what the steps were. I was answering his question. Can I do that? Okay, that's what I'm doing. Do you have any further questions, Mr. Lesh?
Just, you know.
Look, I understand, I understand that the Talbot Boys Monument is a highly sensitive issue now, both for proponents and opponents of its removal. And I'm interested in doing what we can to advance that conversation. Under normal circumstances, I think a request to schedule a workshop would seem like a productive way to do this. But in this case, it's clearly being received as a hostile move. I'm sorry that we're at this point in our discourse. And I'd like to try to restore a spirit of civility and mutual respect around this table, getting through this and other thorny issues. And I just want to offer to do what I can to try to advance that and that civil spirit. I know this is tough, but we need to try to work together to do this.
True.
And I do believe that everybody on this council is having conversations and continuing to have conversations. And we know that this is not a finished, done deal and that we are all, and I know I am personally working on solutions for the future, but I'm choosing to do that through individual conversations. And I believe that I hear some of the other council members are continuing to have conversations. So I don't want anybody to think that we're just digging in and we're not continuing to talk with members of the community and leaders in the community. It's just this particular meeting is not one that we're looking for right now. We want to see through conversations that we're having what individuals we may want to put together or whether we just want to come up with some type of consensus privately amongst each other.
And at the end of the day, Mr. Pack, I'm following your advice and moving forward with the plans for my, the resolution that I put forward and the group of individuals that you cautioned me to work with.
Well, that's fine, Mr. DeVilleo, to do that. Okay, so it appears that the request from these five citizens is not going to be welcomed by members of the council at this time.
Again, Mr. Pack, just one thing.
Okay.
If you don't mind.
Go ahead, sure.
Okay. So I would like to not use the word "not willing" because I think that's not unwilling. So I think the individuals that would actually like to meet with us, council, it might help that the individuals that want to meet with us meet with us individually first. So we can work some, you know, some things out that they might have a problem with us saying, doing, or what our beliefs are. So it might help that we not, the individuals that want to meet with us, meet with us individually. I'm very open. My phone's on. They can call me. I can, you know, sit down with them and, you know, a couple of them. You know, it doesn't, you know, to start the conversation. But I think that's where you really need to start. We need to iron some things out because there are some things that are offensive to people. And, you know, some council members are offended. So it would help that that person wants to not meet and sort of do us all at once, so to speak. It would really help that that person reach out to each council member and set up their own meeting.
So meet with the group, meet with this group individually? Is that what you're suggesting?
All I'm suggesting, I think that would be a way to start the conversation like Mr. Lesh says. So if, you know, Megan wants to reach out to me personally from the town and meet with me, I'm more than willing to do that. You know, and I think it's only appropriate that if we're all in here sitting and we're all sort of just throwing all these things out at us, you know, maybe we can work all that stuff out before we get to that point.
Well, that's a good suggestion, as far as meeting with the group, maybe in pairs. Okay. I know Mr. Lesh and I met with Mr. Potter and Ms. Lombard about three weeks ago, maybe now, three weeks ago. And I felt it was a very productive meeting. We met with the two of them down at the Bay Street location. I felt that we covered some very salient points and we were able to reach some common understanding with them. Again, it's going to be up to the group. I think that, I mean, if, you know, as far as meeting in pairs.
I just want to be productive. I want to have something that I can talk on a normal, professional level in front of the public and not have a bunch of things thrown at us. And the person that's talking or us, it gets in heated conversation because this shouldn't be a heated conversation.
No, no.
It should be a productive conversation. And look, if this conversation lasts part of next year and takes whatever time it takes to get some of these solutions worked out, that's what we need to do.
Mr. Callahan, I will be glad to pair up with you, to meet with this group if they so choose to. Again, Mr. Lesh and I did. So if the group wants to meet with us in pairs, I'll be glad to sit down with you in this group, or Mr. Lesh, whoever. I think that's an excellent idea, if you want to just get the conversation rolling in pairs.
Yeah. And I don't necessarily, you know, and this is no disrespect, I don't necessarily need you to meet with.
I'm saying, I was just offering up. It could be you and Mr. Lesh or you and Mr. DeVilleo.
It's whatever that person wants to reach out to us is comfortable with.
And it doesn't have to be in pairs. We can sit one-on-one with people. I think that's where you get a lot better conversation, when you can sit one-on-one with someone rather than five people and two people and all of that kind of thing. And I think that's what we have to do. We, it's a lot easier to clear the air when you can talk privately, one-on-one with people. And that's what I'm much more interested in doing.
Well, you're saying privately, I think Mr. Callahan was in a public meeting, so.
And each council member can decide for themselves how they would wish to meet, whether they want to do it individually or in pairs.
We'll wait to hear back from whether or not that's something that the group would want to consider. I was just offering up and as a way to get two council members at one time, whether they're going to do five individual meetings. If they did it in pairs, they could not have to rearrange their schedule five different times. So it worked when Mr. Lesh and I did it. If you're not comfortable with meeting with me in pairs, that's fine. I was just offering up as a way not to tax the group so frequently. Okay, so I'm still waiting for a motion on the request to meet with these citizens at a future date. Is there a motion to do so? Okay.
Mr. Pack, I'm still not clear on this. We're not proposing a specific date or time or anything like that at this point.
Once again, if they want to contact us, we'll be willing to meet individually or in a pair. Let them call us, Pete. You know, I'm willing to meet. Let's talk individually or in pairs. It doesn't matter. I mean, the set this date thing is sort of like running us into a corner and making us do something here. I mean, we're all, you know, we're all adults. Reach out to us. And if you want to meet, let's talk about some things. I mean, it's that simple.
I don't know whether I cleared it up for you or not, but any more clarification? There is no date set. I think the first step is to either agree to a meeting or not. Mr. Callahan is offering to meet individually or in pairs with the group and as a public setting. So I'm just waiting for a motion to, ask the request as written, as presented. As presented.
So the request as written is October twentieth.
Which is coming on.
So that date is past, so ostensibly, that is moot. Are we, at this point, simply asking the public to take the initiative on this? That we will not? I'm hearing that we will take some initiative on this and perhaps we can give some reassurances to the public about what the nature of that initiative would be.
Pete, I can't give no more reassurance than tell them, give me a call and I'll meet with them. I don't know what else you need.
And I haven't had a chance to meet with the board that I need to meet with to discuss about putting together a committee with certain individuals to discuss what I want to do, at which time then I'll bring it back to the council to see if that makes sense. I'm sorry. You know, Mrs. Wilson, I'd love to hear from you and speak with you. I saw Mr. Black just the other day and had a great conversation with him. I just got Richard, or Jim Richardson's phone number to give him a call to sit down with him. And I'm still working on the cell phone tower and many other things. So yes, there's plenty of individuals in this community that I'm working with regularly on the statue and discussing it. But I'm not to this point yet. And we've already voted. If we were going to have this work session, Mr. Pack had all the time in the world to schedule this in the beginning, but he didn't.
This was, why are you bringing my name into this?
Because you put this on the agenda.
This is a request made by the public.
No, no, Mr. Pack, you put this on the agenda here.
This is a request made by the NWACP.
That you put on this agenda.
Aye.
So, yes. So that's what I'm saying. I don't understand the confusion here.
I think people are a lot more comfortable, again, talking privately. The minute you put three or more council members together, it all goes on the public record. And people can't be as honest in speaking with one another if you know that it's always recorded. And which is why I keep saying that speaking individually, one-on-one, I believe is going to be a lot more productive at this time than putting us in, you know, in front of an audience. And I know I'm much more comfortable speaking that way, and I'm open to anybody calling me to have a conversation. But right now, to put all of us together, I don't believe that it's going to be productive at this time.
Okay. Anything more, Mr. Lesh, from you, before we move on? Okay. I haven't gotten a motion. You heard the request from Mr. Callahan to reach out for a group meeting with him individually. I will offer that up myself, to meet with the group, either with him or without him, on pairs. I'm still open to meet with you publicly at any designated time. I guess we've had to schedule this down the road as far as when. But I am open as well to meet with the public on this issue or any other issue. And I'll do so publicly. There's nothing I can't say publicly to you that I can say privately to you. And I mean that. So I don't have to hide behind privacy and veils. I will say what I mean and mean what I say. And so I will offer the same thing as Mr. Callahan. If you want to email him, email me for a public meeting with this group. I'll be happy to do so. Happy to do so. Okay. Next matter on the agenda is for a discussion on ballot question B, C, and D. These matters were introduced by the council last month. They have been printed. They are on the official ballot. I was out at the polling place all day yesterday, well, most of this morning and yesterday as well, with several of the deputies. And anecdotally, getting good feedback from the public on these ballot questions. So I'm certainly hoping that persons understand what the ballot questions are. They were sent to them and they're mailed out ballot to them. It's also on the website, as well as we had Ms. Lane and Sheriff Gamble and Mr. Stamp do an interview with the Talbot Spy. And that went out, I believe, Monday of this week as well. So we have many ways for citizens to find out about these ballot questions and what they mean. So I know we have all the three principles here. I don't know who wants to speak to which one. Ms. Lane, I don't know whether you want to lead voice to see, to be dealing with the constant yell. I mean, we have your interview on. I don't know, any council member wants to speak on these? I mean, we have them already printed. We already have our committee that did an excellent job. Ms. Lane, thank you very much for cheering that committee. Sheriff Gamble got the word out through a piece in the paper. And so did Mr. Stamp. Did your piece get published yet? Mr. Lesh?
I believe.
I believe it just went out today, from the whole council.
Okay. So Mr. Lesh also had a piece that went out.
And just FYI to the star Democrat who I hope is listening, please, please, because early voting is going on, please try to get this in the paper, printed edition tomorrow because, you know, so many people are early voting. If it doesn't get in until the weekend, you know, there's only one day of voting left. It's really important, and I know we're going to talk more about it. But I know the letter was written by Mr. Lesh. He did an incredible job on that. So I really appreciate that and allowed us all to sign our names to his perfectly written letter. So thank you for doing that.
Any other comment on question B, C, or D? Clarification, Mr. Stamp, you want to offer any added words to the question?
So, Mr. Council President, members of the council, as your emergency services director, you know, I clearly have been part of this process, and I thank you for your leadership in it. And what I have said is we are at a crossroads when it comes to emergency services right now. And the voters in this county have to decide what level of service that they expect. And so to be, to use as few words as I can, because this can be somewhat complicated when you go in and you read that, the bottom line is it's very difficult right now to find paramedics and emergency medical technicians. It's a very competitive market for a number of reasons. And so we are competing for very few, you know, a small resource. That's number one. Number two, we try to achieve a national standard in our response time for advanced life support. And although we achieve that in some areas of the county, there are some areas of the county that we cannot achieve that. And it continues to become more problematic as time goes on. And although we're trying to address that through putting on a temporary, what we call surge, paramedic unit, the bottom line is that we have to add a sixth crew and establish a station on the north end of the county. And of course, without additional funds, it's going to be very difficult to do that. So we are at a crossroad right now. And with our volunteer fire companies, they work hard. We are very fortunate in this county to have seven very dedicated volunteer fire companies who this county council supports, and they need your support. And so this is critical for our volunteer fire companies as well as emergency services. And I know Sheriff Gamble is here, and I'm sure he'll speak to his needs as well. Thank you.
Ms. Lane, Sheriff Gamble, do you want to speak to any of the ballot questions? You can come up and be heard. Oh, and Susan is here. Susan Bachan from our commission, she's also here. Susan, come on up. And again, Angela, thank you very much for cheering this commission for us. We certainly appreciate it.
Okay. No, I don't need to push the button on that. The one thing I do want to just stress to the citizens is that if you vote for questions B, C, and D, it will only modify our existing tax cap. It will not eliminate it. Question B will have no financial impact to any citizen if that passes. That's just to clarify language. Question C could have an impact to citizens, depending on what CPIU is. For the most part, that's a fairly minor impact. Question D is a greater impact. But you're investing in Talbot County. Now, question D only allows for a temporary increase for five years of one cent per year above what we would be allowed under the cap. So for many people, the majority of our citizens who have a property assessed at $300,000, their impact is $30 a year for that one cent. That's an investment of $150 over the five years. That's really a minor investment in Talbot County and in our public safety, which we all need. But I do want to stress that none of this eliminates our cap. But I do want to stress that none of this eliminates our cap. It's just a modification, and the majority of it is a temporary modification.
Thank you for putting that out. And thank you for, again, for doing the interview as well.
I just wanted to follow up. I want to hear from everybody else, but when it says temporary, there was a letter to the editor that I read, and their concern was that, okay, it helps for, you know, and again, it's not definite that we would do it every year for five years. But they said, "What happens after that?" And it's not that it goes back. So, let's say we did $30 a year for five years, for $150. At the end of those five years, you stay at that rate. You would still be paying that same rate, the additional $30 a year. It's just not going to go up any higher than that. So, for example, if your tax bill is $1,000 a year, I'm just making up a number, or you could tell me what the tax bill is on $300,000.
I don't know what it is off the top of my head.
Okay. So, let's just say your tax bill is $1,000 a year, and you've gone up 150 to $1,150. At the end of five years, you don't drop back down to 1,000. So, I think what the citizens' concern was that wrote a letter was, "Well, how are you going to then continue to fill that gap of what you've spent?" Again, we're not going to go backwards, but the point is that we're not going to continue to increase. So, when we talk about this temporary increase of a penny a year for up to a penny for up to five years, if you have increased another $150, you will continue to pay the extra $150. So, it's not like we're going to have to find those funds someplace else. So, I hope that that answers that person's question and anybody else that had that same concern. It's not that we're going to have to find the money someplace else. And one other that I heard was about public safety, and I've heard both, especially the sheriff, address this. And it's that while we can't specifically earmark it for public safety, because it all goes into the general fund, I know that I, and I believe the rest of this council, has every intention of taking any additional funds to put towards public safety. By law, we can't earmark it, but that is where I know I plan for it to go, and I believe everybody else, you know, has every intention of doing so. So, thank you.
Susan, how are you?
Very well, thank you.
Thank you for serving on our commission.
It was a pleasure to serve with you. I just wanted to add a couple little things to what Angela has said. She has said it extremely well, as well as Mr. Stamp and Sheriff Joe have done an excellent job in the presentations. I just wanted to add this piece as both a business owner, business property owner, resident, residential property owner. We have been out and about. We have had multiple email blasts and have gotten tremendous amount of response, both from individuals. I'm sorry this keeps slipping. We've got a tremendous amount of very positive response, and it has to do with, let's say, I have a practice with 2,000 patients. A third of them are Medicare, meaning they're over 65. These people are extremely anxious about the current situation of our health and safety. And these people, when we explain the very clear increases, are saying, "That's nothing. I would more than double that to know that an ambulance was going to get there within that four minutes, or a police officer was going to be available when I need it." So, these are the comments that we have gotten back when we have gone out with the information on B, C, and D. So, I wanted you to know that we, as part of your taxpayer team, took it to the citizens and are getting favorable responses. And I hope all the others follow up and vote yes on B, C, and D.
Thank you very much. Sheriff Gamble, you're back there. I was on the...
Thank you, Mr. President. And just thank you, council. I know this council has been committed to trying to get the sheriffs and the last council that I was, when I first got elected, has been committed to trying to get us to where we need to be competitive, and we've made great steps. If you hadn't taken those steps in the last council and this council, I'm not quite sure if I could staff patrols right now. So, thank you. But we all know, and it's obvious to you all because of, you know, the questions B, C, and D, that attracting and retaining good employees, good-to-great employees, is a challenge. And I hope the citizens have, with all the attention that we've given it, actually take, just take a few minutes, 17 minutes, I think, was the video that Clay and Angela and I put together. Take 17 minutes out of your day and watch that video and make an educated decision on this, because it really is an investment in our community. It's an investment in our safety. This isn't to line the pockets of, this is about young people who are committed to public safety in our community that I think that we owe a reasonable pay rate and a reasonable benefit package to in order for them to work 24/7, 365. You know, nine months ago, we were, and Clay's people were heroes, because we were still going to work when everybody else went home. And I think it's time now for our community to stand behind us. I'm confident that this council will use those funds to further our public safety missions, and that's been brought up to me before. And I've told people, I said, "I'm very confident that that's where this money will be spent." And I'm glad that Ms. Price brought that up tonight. But I just really encourage the citizens to make an educated decision, because we really are at a crossroads in both Clay's office and my office. We really are there, and it's going to be, it's difficult now, and it's going to be much more difficult six months from now, and I fear a year from now to attract any police officers. Eastern Police right now is struggling as well. They're down eight officers right now. And it's going to become more and more and more competitive, and the price is going to go up to have people to police and to respond to your house in medical emergencies, because young people just aren't. And we've got to do better as leaders to try to motivate them, but young people aren't applying like they did. When I went to the State Police Academy, there were 700 people showed up for 60, 60-some positions. They're barely getting enough people to show up even there to fill the positions they have. So, anyway, thank you for your support. I hope the citizens take it seriously and do some research. Our number's 822-1020. Ask for me or one of my command staff. We'd be glad to explain and answer questions to members of the public that have questions before they go to the polls or see us at the polls, because, you know, some of the deputies off duty. Mr. Pack's been there as well to help explain to people and, you know, those things. So, thank you very much for your support.
Thank you, Sheriff, for all that you've done for this effort. You were on the committee as well. Thank you for serving, as well as Mr. Stamp. Thank you for serving on the committee. And that's where it started, just getting the people around the table from that committee to give input and to look at the language. This is not the first time we've tried this. As you know, we're in successful a time prior. But the committee did a really good job, I think, as being open-minded, focusing on what it is that we were attempting to do. And it wasn't an attempt to elevate taxes to an extreme level, as Ms. Lane said. You're still going to have that tax cap there. You're still going to have that 2%. But removing CPIU will allow us to at least capture the full 2% every single year, and that one cent increase is only a five-year entity, and that goes away after that. But it does allow you to do some compounded interest over that five-year period of time. So, yeah, and hats off to your guys who've been on the polls the last two days, and I've been out there and talking with people, allowing us to at least see them face-to-face and answer their questions. And for the most part, citizens have been very, you know, upfront. If they didn't understand, they said, "Explain this one to me. What does C mean? What does B mean?" And you just take a moment and walk with them, you know? Walk right down the sidewalk with them, explaining it to them. So, I think people are getting it. I'd like to see some of our EMT officers out there if they can, if they're not, you know, not working, come out and help out. I think once we get into November 3rd, and we now have to go out to many locations, I think the more hands on deck will be important to meet people on November 3rd.
Clay's people are signed up, but we have a master sheet that one of the guys is working on off-duty, and Clay's got people focused on that sheet as well to volunteer.
Good job. Good job, man.
I do need to give a shout-out to Angela, and she's done a great job, and Susan has done a magnificent job. She's helped to keep us organized and gotten the message out, and I'm getting emails from her about how we can do better to get the message out. So, thank you both for your commitment to public safety and the young people that are serving here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. It's in the paper. We have it on the internet. We have letters to the editor. So, you have asked questions. Did you all have to ask questions? Yes. Who got that?
So, I'd like to give a couple remarks on these questions. So, I had initially asked for this agenda to be kind of cleaned up so that it would just be, every vote would be unanimous, you know, we wouldn't be arguing. Try to show unanimous support, and obviously, that didn't happen, and maybe that's for the best. Everything's for the best, you know? And we're all, obviously, very different council members with different backgrounds, different people who follow us, support us, and I hope and believe that we're all for B, C, and D on this. And so, that should go to show to the community, as you're thinking to vote, you know, if you're thinking about one of us and all five of us that look different, sound different, and do different things are saying yes, then maybe you should also be thinking yes. I've received a lot of text messages. I've seen a lot of the deputies putting out a lot of great answers to people on social media, saying, "What are these questions? Should I vote?" And Mr. Gamble's staff, or Sheriff Joe's staff, has been fantastic in supporting these. I absolutely do support the emergency services. Question B for, you know, is just grammatical clarifying, basically correcting what we're doing. With question C, that is what I always tell everybody, that's the one that put us in the hole, the CPIU. We were never, should, nobody expected CPIU to drop as low as it did, and that's eliminating, that prevents us from going back in the hole in future years as we have done. And question D, you know, everybody on social media loves to bring up the trees that are being cut down right now all over the county, and what's going on with those? Well, there's a big building out there with a lot of county tenants in there, and we're going to be tearing that down and relocating the sheriff's department for one of those. So, it'd certainly be helpful to me, a very conservative, scared-to-death person, to know that if we needed additional funds for that, for the sheriff's department or for the sheriffs themselves, we would have that ability to do that one time during those five years if we needed to. So, when you're thinking about B, C, and D, think about your council and what your council's saying to you. Again, we're all very different individuals, and I hope that all of us will support these.
Okay. And I want to lend my support also to question number A. It's not listed here, I don't know why, but it should also be listed here. You know, we also need to find a way for not just this council, but future councils to not be limited by residency when it comes to the Office of Law and the Planning Office to allow future councils to select individuals who are appropriate for the job, irregardless of residency. And I think that's one that I'm also urging citizens to consider as they're coming out to the polls. Again, I was there yesterday, was there today, probably be there again tomorrow for the rest of the week, and I will continue asking them to consider that one as well. I think we have to allow not just this council, but future council, to select individuals based on their talents and their gifts and not based on their residency. That's very important. Mr. Lester?
Thank you, Mr. Pack. I agree precisely on that point, and I wanted to get back to questions B, C, and D, and the question about what would this cost? And I did a little bit of arithmetic. I had it checked by Finance Officer Ms. Lane. And the difference, this year, the cap would have been 1.9%, the CPI. The difference between that and the 2%, and keep in mind, the council opted not to raise the property tax this year. So, just because the council is empowered to do so does not mean the council will. In fact, were to make up for that, we're drawing on reserves. At some point, we've got to make up for that. At some point, we're going to have to replenish those funds that we're drawing down. We cannot do that indefinitely. You cannot indefinitely spend more than you take in. That's what we're doing this year because we knew this was a tough year. But the difference between that 1.9, had we levied that tax increase and the 2% that we would be allowed under question C, for the median household of $316,000, if your house is assessed at that, this would have meant a difference of just $17. One, seven. This is, as Mr. Pack said, this is pretty minimal. The penny, as Ms. Lane said, is certainly a bigger chunk, but even that is not a significant increase. That penny, question D, if enacted for that same median-priced house, and I'm sorry, $326,000 house, the increase would be just $32 this year on top. We're not talking about a significant increase here. The cap would still be a meaningful cap. Talbot County would still have the lowest property taxes in the state under this. This is affordable, and it is so important, it is so important for preserving public safety here. It is so important for us to be able to fund our sheriff's deputies and our ambulance services. This is absolutely vital. That is where the gap is, is in public safety. We need your help to do this.
Thank you, Mr. Lester.
I'd like to add something. So, I echo everything about, you know, the tax questions, and I'm, you know, I think everybody knows I'm the most conservative one up here. When I ran 10 years ago, I was like, "Oh, I'm going to find the fat and cut that county budget," because we were in a really difficult time 10 years ago, and I found that there really wasn't that much. And I think Mr. Hollis was on the council at that time, and it's like, nope, it was pretty lean. And I think that the council is conditioned to keep it that way, even if we have some extra funding. But I do, I also want to touch on question A that Mr. Pack touched on. Oh, my God, we're going to agree on something tonight. But it's another letter that I read from a citizen that said, "Absolutely not." And some of the things I've seen on social media are like, "No, you know, they should have to live here. They're making decisions for Talbot County." I want you to remember a couple of things. It's not automatic, like the tax increase. It's not automatic that we certainly will look and try to have people that live here fill those roles. But I can tell you that what happens sometimes is something happens with someone's family. And I can say that that has happened. I know to an employee at some point over the last 10 years, they had a family emergency. They needed to live someplace else to help take care of family. What this does is it doesn't say, "We're just going to go out and hire somebody from Queen Anne's County or from Montgomery County." It means that if somebody has an extraordinary circumstance, that it gives the council the flexibility. And remember, it requires four-fifths of the council. It only allows the council the flexibility sometimes to have some compassion and to allow that employee, that employee that we value, to do something that makes sense for their life while also having an incredible employee in the county. So, it is not automatic. And all we're asking for in question A is to allow four-fifths of the council to have that flexibility when it is absolutely needed. And I believe, as far as me, that would be a pretty high bar for me to say, "Okay, that's fine. You can live someplace else." It's not that simple. Sometimes people have, you know, a spouse, and they're living and working in another county, and they have to do what makes sense. So, just remember, it's not automatic. Again, we're just asking for that flexibility. And if you have questions about that, again, try to contact us and let us know. I hope that the Star Democrat and the Talbot Spy and anybody that's out there on social media can also give this one some attention. Let's not focus on the negative things. We've had enough of that. And let's not just, you know, we have to focus on these ballot questions, all four of them, because you do elect us to be here to make decisions, and we do the best we can for the majority of the citizens. So, allow us flexibility on all of these questions. Thank you very much.
Okay. Again, to all you, thank you very much for the John, Susan, Joe, Clay, Angela. Thank you. And say thanks to the rest of the committee as well, to all the members. I know that Dr. Griffiths is home recovering from her knee surgery. We want to send her our thoughts and prayers as she recovers, but also want to extend a thank you to her as well for her participation in this group collectively. So, again, early voters are out there right now, and hopefully, we can meet them tomorrow at the polls and keep encouraging them to select A, B, C, and D as they're going. as they're going in, and answer any questions they may have, and realizing that, you know, to stay competitive with our surrounding counties. You know, we, we can't even hire engineers right now for Mr. Clark's Department of Public Works. We've been, we've been downing engineer for how many years now at Mount Ray?
Two.
Two years? Two years without an engineer? Come on. We got deputies leaving us going over to Anarona County and other places. We can't get paramedics? Come on. Come on. We, we, we need your help. We need your help. This is, this is, this is you helping you. This is just a vehicle by which to do it. This is you helping you. And I will be there again tomorrow morning answering any questions face-to-face. If you have a little to speak with me, I'll be glad to take that on too. But let's talk about it. All right? Okay. Thank you very much, gentlemen and madams. Thank you, appreciate it. Ms. Edwards, are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay, come on up. Madam Secretary, we now have an update regarding the, the county repurposing center. We're going to hear from Warren Edwards, our road superintendent, and he has some updates for council, and Warren, the floor is yours.
Good evening. So, the second school, they have finished hauling in the demolition material. I think they have some more soils left that they want to bring into us in the next seven to 10 days, but we still have in the neighborhood of about 10,000 or 12,000 tons of concrete to separate and crush at the site, at our site. I did a, had a tack committee meeting last week, and we have a meeting scheduled for November the 4th with the Planning Commission at 9:00 AM, and then November 16th for the Board of Appeals. There are some issues outstanding. One of them is a concern about the sewer and how to handle that. I talked to Ms. Morris the other day in environmental health and Ray Clark, our Public Works. So, in the, you have a copy of the prepared budget, I think, in your package from me, and I added the money in there for that, if and when we ever get this thing off the ground. But in order to get a final, and Mary Kay's here to correct me if I say this wrong, in order to get a final approval, we had to have something in the works on the site plan for the sewer, even if it's not to be done, you know, in six months or a year, but that it's an effective plan that we're working on to do it. So, I think, Ray, with the end, December, I think we have to meet in December to get a comprehensive plan for a sewer extension, so.
Compwood Sewer Plan? Okay.
That's kind of the last thing that would hold us up from doing this, that I know of. We don't see any real issues with the appeals committee. It's really a variance for setback, property setback, and the size of the use of the lot that we're doing it in, and we don't think there's going to be any issues with that. So, all that will be done on, by the 16th. We also had a, we've had several meetings with MES, because Talbot, Caroline, and Queen Anne have an agreement with them, which we met with Mr. Cooper Smith the other day, myself and Ray Clark, and they support what we're doing. They want to change the contract agreement that we have with them to include, and if I say this wrong, Mr. Cooper Smith can correct me, they want to change the contract agreement wording, verbiage, so that it includes us doing repurposing. And then, I'm going to go to their November meeting and meet with all three counties' representatives and explain what we're doing and what our plans are. So, that should be the last hurdle that, that I know of, as far as, you know, coming back to council and getting a vote to approve or not approve.
Let me, let me go through the, the dates that I have here in front of me, Warren. You're on this, doing the agenda for the Planning Commission November the 4th, correct?
Yes, 9:00 AM.
And, and that's, is that for the site plan for setbacks?
Um, that's for both of them.
Come on up, come on up, Mary Kay, come on. So, what, what's the, the repurposing centers' purpose on the November 4th Planning Commission agenda?
They are on the agenda for two items, the site plan approval by the Planning Commission, as well as the Planning Commission needs to make a recommendation to the Board of Appeals for their special exception use.
Okay. And the Board of Appeals, if, and should that recommendation be favorable, then you got to go to the Board of Appeals on November 16?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
And get that, their approval on that special exception for that use of that site?
Yes.
Okay. You have an outstanding contract with this company for your equipment, which is due to end on November the 6th, I believe.
It is, and they've agreed to extend it to December the 1st at no extra cost to us. And they've also agreed to hold until December the 1st the 100 percent fee back to the purchase of the equipment if we do get this passed. They'll take every dime that we spent on a rental and put towards the purchase of this equipment.
Okay. And let me, make sure I got my date straight here. And Mr. Clark, we have, as far as the comprehensive water and sewer plan, there's only two times you can make changes to that, December being one of which. Is it the intention of the Public Works Advisory Board to include the site as, as a revision of the county comprehensive water and sewer plan to the state?
Yes. We would actually have to amend the plan to show that the site is in the sewer service area of Region 2.
Okay. And you plan to take that up in December?
The, yes, the, for introduction, we, the Compwood Sewer Plan is amended on the last legislative day in December, and it's done each quarter.
Okay. I said twice, I said four times, I'm sorry, I said twice. Okay, so, and I got that date straight. And so, Warren, at, at earliest, if I'm looking at my calendar, it's the 17th of November, looks like the earliest date we can get you back here. That would allow you to go through the Planning Commission for that consideration, allow you to go to the Board of Appeals the day before on the 16th.
Yes.
And get you back before us on the, on the 17th for council consideration.
I think that MES is working towards, I think, the 12th or the 14th as well to get us in that window.
Okay. And is, and is that just the MES, is that just them including that language in their, in their agreement, in the MOU with us as a repurposing center?
I can help, Bill.
Yeah.
Per, in discussion with MES, we need to have an amendment to the contract that includes the repurposing facility. The intent is to try to have something drafted by next week. What we will then try to do is then, they're scheduling an administrator's meeting with Dorch, I'm sorry, with Caroline, Queen Anne's County, and Kent County and Talbot County, that are the, were the members of the Mitchell Regional Landfill Concept. So, they're trying to set that meeting up, I think, as, as Warren said, like the 11th or the 12th of November.
Okay, you're going to be there to present?
Yes.
Okay, so, then you'll have that in hand also on the 17th.
Correct.
And as Warren indicated, we have to, yeah, we have to have the other three counties agreeing to this along with MES.
Okay. So, it, it looks like the stars are starting to line up here for you, you know? So, you got, go ahead and get the Planning Commission on the November 4th, MES, language, we draft it, and then Board of Appeals decision on the 16th. That way, when you come back before us on the 17th, you should know, all the answers should be, all the questions should be answered.
Okay.
All right?
I would encourage you to read all the letters when you get a chance.
Okay.
I think you got 32 or 33 that I've gotten from State Departments, local government, and contractors local. So, they're very encouraging.
Now, look, you know, I'm, I'm behind you with this thing. I just, you know, we just have to go through the right steps, you know, with planning and with zoning and with.
Sure.
You know, we have the agreement with MES and so forth. So, you know, we, and I certainly appreciate you going back to the vendor and getting them to extend that contract out through, through December to allow you to continue processing that, that, the product from, from the school. But, yeah, we just got to make sure we get all, everything lined up, so there won't be anyone throwing flags and saying, "Hey, you didn't do this, you didn't do that." You know, we, we want to abide by the same rules as, as any other private entity, so.
Understood.
Okay. Yes?
So, just to follow up, so a week ago today, we had the annual consolidated transportation plan, and I did bring your repurposing center up on that call with Tim Smith from the State Highway Administration, and I'm, I'm waiting to get some information from them. He's a materials expert, as his boss told us. He has a lot of experience in this, and I asked him for any kind of roadblocks, stumbling blocks, things that we should look out for, as well as anything, pointers that he can give us as well, and he's offered to give over some information. So, I'm looking forward to getting that and sitting down with you and going through this together.
That'll definitely be helpful.
Okay.
So, Mr. President, maybe we can get a jump on county manager. Mr. Edwards did want your formal approval about that lease extension at no cost with GT Mid-Atlantic through December 1st, November 6th to December 1st?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, let's, let's go right into that. That's a good segue. So, what item was added? That's the last one, okay?
I'll make a motion to approve. There's no additional cost to this.
No additional cost. This is approved, the extension of the lease contract for the repurposing center. Motion by Mr. DeVilleo.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lesh. Any further questions of Mr. Edwards, why he's here? Hearing none, Madam Secretary, please call your role.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Lesh.
Aye.
Thank you, Warren. Good work, thank you.
Real, real quick, I'm going to leave these bags on the counter in the county manager's office area. Look at them. This, this is from one load of concrete, and it's produced five different materials.
Oh, okay.
So, it explains each bag, tells you what it is, but it's a big deal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Walking around with a bag of rocks.
Dirt.
Dirt. That's, that's a roads guy for you. Only, only a roads guy would walk around with a bag of rocks.
Ice rocks, he said, very nice.
Yes?
Talbot Historical Society is requesting a letter of support from the council for Eastern Shore Heritage Stories of the Chesapeake Program grant. There is no county funding involved.
Is there a motion? Letter of support?
I, I so move.
Moved by Mr. Lesh. Second by Mr. Callahan. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Secretary, please call your role.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Lesh.
Aye.
Mr. Clark, you ready? So, council, we're requesting approval to award amendment number one to the bid number 20-3, Engineering Design Services for the Extension of Sewer to Bosnian Nevet, awarded to Century Engineering in the amount of $16,250 for the preparation of an environmental report, and it's required by the USDA for the use in their loan.
That's clear.
Any further comment?
No, no other comments.
Okay. Here with the intent, a motion on bid 20-03. Moved by Ms. Callahan.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lesh. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call your role.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Lesh.
Aye.
Council saying with the same bid, we're looking for approval to award amendment number two to Century Engineering in the amount of $15,200 to design a new website specific to the Bosnian Nevet Sewer Extension Project to keep the citizens informed.
Is there a motion on bid number two, same, on amendment number two, same bid number?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Lesh.
Second.
Second by Ms. Callahan. Any further discussion?
Yes.
So, just to clear, so, $15,000 is the cost for just the website?
Yes, sir.
Where's the money coming from?
This is actually going to be part of the sanitary district, so this will be paid back by the loan and/or grants that we received for the sewer extension.
I, I haven't bought a website in a long time, but that seems like.
This, we're actually, this is going through the engineering firm, Century,'s website, so we're, we're trying to get it so that we're taking the plans, a lot of information that's going to be, you know, we're not hosting this, this is actually being hosted on their, their site.
Why can't we just open up a Facebook page? That's where everybody gets it. People, I mean, why?
Will this have the GIS links and things like?
This is going to add that as well.
Okay, okay.
We're also going to be having, like, the easement agreements, we're going to have those posted. We're trying to do this also through a communication strategy as well to try and get information to and from the citizens, as well as us out to the citizens.
It's also one of, I think it's actually a type, top item in your office in terms of questions from the public.
It is, and we, this is a way for us to get the information out right now.
Any more questions? We have a motion, the second, Madam Secretary, please call your role, and amendment number two.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Lesh.
Aye.
Thank you, council. Next item is requesting your approval to accept a $50,000 Hazard Mitigation Grant from Maryland Emergency Management Agency. Clay, do you want to say anything about that?
So, this is a grant, it's a 75-25 matching grant, $50,000 grant. We would actually receive $37,500. We would be able to match it with in-kind services. I'm asking for your permission to accept this. This will upgrade our five-year Hazard Mitigation and Community Resiliency Plan, so it will be on not only behalf of the county, but for the towns that partner with us on this project. And so, it's, we were very fortunate to be recognized for our work on our past plan, and that's why we were prioritized for this grant. So, the request is to accept the grant and to contract with S&amp;S Planning and Design out of Cumberland, Maryland, who works with us on, on this project.
Make a motion to accept the grant.
Any second?
Second it.
All right. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, please call your role.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Lesh.
Aye.
Council regarding board appointments, requesting the reappointment of chip council to the Planning Commission.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second it.
Any further discussion? Mr. Counsel being reappointed, Madam Secretary, please call your role.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Lesh.
Aye.
Ethics Commission requesting the appointment of Barbara Heatley.
Is there a motion?
To move.
Second.
Moved by Mr. DeVilleo, or Mr. Callahan, second by Mr. DeVilleo. And Ms. Heatley on to the Ethics Commission. If there's no further discussion, Madam Secretary, call your role.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Lesh.
Aye.
And finally, Local Emergency Planning Committee, the town of Travis requesting the appointment of Norm Fagel.
So moved.
Second it.
Okay. Any further discussion on Norm Fagel to be on the Local Emergency Planning Commission for the town of Travis? Hearing none, Madam Secretary, please call your role.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye. Aye.
Mr. Lesh.
Aye.
Council requesting you to move your November 24th meeting to November 17th and take a motion to declare it a special legislative day.
Is there a motion to move the meeting to November 17th?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Secretary, please call your role.
Mr. Pack?
Aye.
Mr. DeVilleo?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Mr. Lesh.
Aye.
County offices will be closed on Tuesday, November 3rd in recognition of Election Day, and the meeting with the local delegation this year has been rescheduled for Monday, November 9th, 5:00 p.m., Wy Oak Room in the Talbot County Community Center. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hollis. Council comment? Mr. DeVilleo?
So, I would just like to say that my children, obviously mean the world to me, we just wrapped up a youth soccer league out to the YMCA. And I'd like to thank the YMCA for, one, making it a safe event. You know, you had to wear masks to get out there. They limited the number of the kids on the field, which then limited the number of parents on the sidelines. And it gave the kids an outlet to get out, exercise, and socialize. And youth sports, recreational sports have always been very important in my life. When I stood on the sidelines and looked at the children playing and the parents around it, it's the most diversified group of individuals I've seen in Talbot County when you go to a recreational sports event. And it really was nice to see the kids getting along, the parents getting along, and everyone being safe. So, I'd like to thank the YMCA for being one of those organizations that, whether they recognize it or not, they're doing a tremendous job of bringing the community together and allowing us all to see that we are a community. Thank you.